All right, ladies and gentlemen, a call to order the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners this March 12th. It is a business meeting. I'll ask Mr. Kup to take the role.
Good morning, Commissioners. We are joined this morning with County Council, Stephen Matcor, and to my left, the Clerk of the Board, Mary Rathke. We also have "Learning the Tools of the Trade," Kevin Moss, from the Commissioner's office as well, here this morning. So, let's start with the role. Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Ludlow.
Here. I might note this, the first time the five of us been together for, well, I think, a month, so it's a pleasure to have everybody back. Will you all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? There's no comma after nation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the first items on the agenda is, as typical, citizens' communications. So, I will call you up. Please come up. It's Jay Minor and Dave Adams.
I want to thank you for allowing us to testify this morning. My name's Jay Minor, longtime resident of North Stafford, which has become Stafford Hamlet, under your direction, for the last eight years. I live at 18,300 South Witten Lane, West Lynn. Been there for 28 years now. Both Dave and I come this morning before you to update you on what's happening in the Hamlet, and specifically, what we believe is a land use compromise, hopefully, that will help us go forward with something that everybody can buy in with, especially our three cities that touch our boundaries. That's Twalladon, West Lynn, and Lake Oswego. We've had, over the years, divergent visions of the development in the Stafford area. There's been three main areas. One, the majority of the Stafford Hamlet residents and citizens in the surrounding cities have opposed urbanizing Stafford and favor preserving Stafford's open spaces and rural character. Two, Metro and developers envision Stafford developed into a new town center with corresponding urban densities. And three, Clackamas County has long eyed the area for future employment land opportunities. Since the formation of the Stafford Hamlet nine years ago, our residents have worked to formulate thoughtful recommendations that strike a reasonable compromise between these differing visions. In light of the Oregon Court of Appeals remand of Metro's urban reserve designation for the Stafford Hamlet, the following recommendations represent a solution that we believe will achieve the best outcome for all. Our compromise considers Stafford as comprised of two separate areas. I believe you have a map in the area. There's an eight and a half by 11 there that shows what we call the Borland area and the area north of the river, which is mostly rolling hills and farms owned or five acre zone. The two separate areas treated separately in a way that allows all stakeholders to get some of what they want. One, the Borland area, for future urbanization, which is between the river and I-205, and two, the remaining Hamlet, which is north of the river, we see little change. Borland, we designated as an urban reserve, suitable for use as an employment area for development, such as Cruzway-type Class A office campus with restaurants and other limited retail support for people working there. And it has a close proximity to I-205, minimizing traffic impact and infrastructure needs in the rest of the Hamlet and neighboring cities. The second area is north of the Twallton River, and it would exclude the Halcyon neighborhood, which is just in the northwest corner of Borland area. We remove from the urban reserve, reclassify as undesignedated, and we suggest upzoning to either five acre or 10 acre. This allows for the protection and preservation of the open space and Stafford's rural character. And it would also give relief to the large EFU landowners from the burdens of the 80 acre minimum for the 1,200 acres that are now EFU zoned by allowing upzoning to the predominant zoning in the area, which is five acre, resulting in no more than additional 200 homes. And this is based on our own analysis, also including the five acre minimum area now that is, would have another 40 homes if you completely build out. We believe that Stafford Hamlet compromise represents the best achievable outcome.
Jay, you're going to have to wrap it up.
Okay. By allowing the upzoning greatly reducing the potential traffic impact and preserving our Stafford character. And we urge you to join Stafford Hamlet community and support this compromise. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith.
This letter was delivered to the Board of County Commissioners this week, and I read it with great interest. I think there's a lot of thought and consideration gone into this letter and what you propose as your vision for the area, and I was very thankful for it, and I forwarded it on to some other folks. I see this map. Boy, is that quite the map. It's very busy. I'm going to have to take time to digest all the stuff on it, but I really like maps and I appreciate it. I think that you folks in the area are working very hard, and I think that you've come up with some very interesting and possibly doable results of your study. I don't think this board in itself will make the decision on these land designations. I would hope you would take this to the legislature and testify before committees or be part of whatever discussions are down there, because this is a very good letter, I think. And I'm happy that you guys presented your opinions, and we'll just move on and see what happens.
Thank you, Commissioner. We appreciate that. The key, though, I want to point out is, we would like to be at whatever table these discussions have.
And I think you should be.
And it tend to be. We have a very active board and community members. But along those same lines, we have three cities that have to come together on this too, and I think we all realize that, and the Commissioners realize that too.
Well, we are trying to meet with the three cities involved, just to sit down at the table and say, well, what are your thoughts? What are you doing? And this board is initiating that communication, and I think that's very important. I don't think Clackamas County wants to become a city in providing services to all of these, what are considered rural areas now. And I do think the cities have a huge role in this, and I would like to see them become more active in the planning of this. Thank you.
Yeah, very quickly, there was a meeting already of those entities, and it's very recently, so good for all of those participants. Commissioner Bernard.
Well, I'd just like to thank you guys, because you are the hardest working group I know of. And I also want to say that, frankly, Metro's vision has never been ours and never will be ours. A town center is absurd out there. It will never resolve the transportation issues that would come with a town center. So, this is really close, and I'm really happy that you're here, because if there's one thing that I, we absolutely totally all agree on, that Borland could be a key employment area for Clackamas County, and that's always been our focus. But I also appreciate that you've considered some zoning changes that would allow a very slightly higher density than currently exists, because it is a beautiful area, and there's a lot that needs to be protected. And there's no question that none of us, I don't think I've ever heard anyone envision anything close to the densities that Metro suggested. Matter of fact, we did a calculation at one time, and it was almost impossible to get that density because of the, you know, protecting the streams and wildlife and all those other things. So, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I might note that, you know, currently, new UGB areas are required to have 10 units per acre as density, according to Metro. They have proposed, at least my predecessor was much more in favor of up to 30. I am much more of a low-density person, having been a real estate broker for 40 years and realized what people really do want, and according to the Home Builders survey recently, 80% of the people want single-family homes in suburbia. So, as far as the housing density thing, I'm, I agree with Jim, you know, enough is enough. Now, this is a very detailed plan, and it's a compromise, as it says at the top of the page, and I think it's very well done by you folks, and you've done a great job on it. Like Commissioner Smith said, though, you best get in touch with the legislature, specifically Representatives Davis and Julie Parrish.
Clem.
And Clem, yeah, Clem's pretty important, too. And let them know of this, because it may coincide with the vision that legislators already have for this area, too.
Yeah, we've already met with two of the legislators.
Good. Excellent. Yes, Mr. Adams.
Dave Adams? I was the chief petitioner for formation of the Stafford Hamlet, and I'm extremely proud of the progress we've made over the years. And this compromise really represents all those years of hard work, trying to bring everyone, all the stakeholders together. We clearly understand that county commission isn't the only player in this role. That's why compromise is the key word in negotiating the future here, and as my friend Jay mentioned, the cities as well. So, it's been really difficult to strike a balance between what we can put on the table that the cities might embrace, what we can put on the table that the county might embrace, what we can put on the table that Metro can embrace. We never imagined that we would be dealing with the legislature, but we're aware that's the way things are rolling, so we are prepared to engage that process. Last time I was here, I brought this same map, and at the time, it was just after we'd held the vote, but it was before the remand. So, I'm bringing it back, because I think it sort of helps all of us make the case for the compromise, because what we're asking for is pretty much exactly what the Urban Reserves, Rural Reserve Policy Advisory Committee recommended two years ago. So, review, if you would, please, the highlighted items on the left side. Eleven of the citizens that participated in that whole process, that were on the Policy Advisory Committee, recommended essentially this compromise that we're proposing to you. On the right-hand side, you'll see that eight of your own planning commissioners, volunteers, recommended the same thing. So, I think that ought to help everyone sort of realize, that was two years of work, you all understand, and thoughtful work that was all criteria-driven, and I just hope that everyone involved understand that if everyone is willing to give up a little piece of what they hold dear in exchange for a compromise, we can actually extract ourselves from this purgatory, from the political purgatory and from the legal purgatory. This really represents the compromise, we believe, that can get us all out of this thing. I'd like to have another life someday.
Been a long time, hasn't it, Dave? Commissioner Bernard.
Well, I was going to say that, you know, what, how Washington County was successful with their legislative effort is they went hand in hand, in agreement, and got a solution. I mean, I'd be happy to talk to Gary Smith and others, and maybe we could work together and go down to Salem. I mean, one of the ways to solve the density issue is legislatively. And so, the legislature can say, well, we're not going to allow you to require this kind of density, and we can bring this land in. The only thing I'm not really sure of, it's about the designation of a reserve. As it currently stands, I think you suggested that, well, this says there should be no urban reserves, but if you had it all as an urban reserve, except for those areas which you identified would be undesignedated, then you could zone it that way, and then the legislature maybe will put in legislation that that zoning cannot go below such and such, and that might be a way to look at it. But it's something we need to continue talking about.
May I comment?
Sure.
Actually, we're willing to accept Borland Road as an urban reserve.
Yeah, I know that.
Okay, I thought you said.
No, I thought, this says, do not designate any urban reserves. Oh, this was the minority, okay. The rest of them, you mentioned one neighborhood, right?
Yeah, there's one small neighborhood in the northwest corner of the Borland area that's already like half acre, acre parcels, and those, that neighborhood would like to be left out of the urban reserve.
Okay.
I mean, that's.
That makes sense.
I think you have a real good possibility.
That makes sense, yeah.
The rest of it, the Borland area allows, we did some calculations, and some outside planners did too with the Borland neighborhood, and it's about 200 acres plus or minus that could be developed, less, you know, take out the churches, take out the schools, and take out the wildlife habitat and floodplain areas, so there's a couple hundred acres there, which is twice as much as Center Point and Meadows, Cruzway area, believe it or not.
Doesn't look like it.
No, it doesn't look like it, but we've done some calculations ourselves, and that's what comes out. I mean, you ask your planners about it, but.
Okay, Commissioner Savis.
Well, appreciate the effort and appreciate the information you brought today, but I never, if you could put me back on the mailing list, I haven't been off the mailing list for at least a year, so I didn't get anything over the weekend, and I don't know if Commissioner Schrader did, but I don't get a, is this, is this a letter that you're referring to?
Well, yeah, that was just sent out Tuesday.
It's more of a form than it is a letter.
Yeah, it is. We call it a talking point summary.
That was delivered to our office.
But if you could put me back on the mailing list, but I've been off the mailing list for a long time. I don't know why, but I haven't received anything from you guys for ages.
I think that came through the BCC mail.
It did.
So, I don't know why you wouldn't have a copy.
Yeah, mine was on my desk.
Mine was on my desk. We got that this week.
All right. But if you could put me on the email list, I'd appreciate it. I have my own email address, p.savis@clackamas.us.
Okay, we'll make sure, Paul. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Schrader.
I just wanted to thank Dave and everybody for coming, and I remember Dave starting the Hamlet, working with you folks.
I'm sorry, hold up.
The chair. What happens, I have a cold, so I keep the mic off, so I'm not coughing into the microphone, but I just want to thank Dave and for starting the Hamlet process way back when, because I remember feeling that in order for your area to have a voice in any kind of a conversation, you needed to kind of move through that process and have a unified voice of what you wanted. My continued suggestion to you folks, because I know you've been working hard on this two years, is to watch the legislative process in Salem very closely, because it's come to my attention that there are lots of different groups down there now circling with various ideas of what they want to see happen, contacting Brian Clem and other legislators. So, in order for you to be part of that process, watch it closely and be present there, because you can't get excluded from the table if you make sure that you are physically present. That's it. So, I would testify, I would make sure this information gets to the right folks down in Salem. So, your version of a compromise is also front and center with the other interests that seem to be circling down there, so.
Commissioner Schrader, thank you. I know you were around at the very beginning of the Hamlets, and I remember making a pledge to you when we were going through that process, that my goal was to actually find what the middle.
Right.
The people in the middle of the road wanted. I mean, we've got extremists on both sides, to build it all out or leave it all alone, and I really feel this compromise honors that pledge I made to you in the county back then. Let's find where the middle ground is and go from there, so thank you all very much.
Call it the third way. Not left, but right, but forward.
Well, the main message you'll hear from the Commissioners, again, it sounds like you're already doing it, is to get in touch with the legislature. I got to throw my, one of that, my favorite adages out. If you're not at the table, you're probably on the menu, so show up down there, that'd be great.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And now, we have Mr. Mac Woods and Ms., oh, yeah, yes, Mac Woods.
Mac Woods, Navy veteran. Commissioner John Ludlow, Chair, and I was realized that you've been a Realtor longer than I have.
I have.
Forty years, you mentioned.
Almost.
I don't want to waste good time talking about you. I'm sorry.
That's a great line.
Fun stuff. Are we having fun, Chair?
That'll be used later on me, too, I'm sure.
I'm a member of the American Legion, part of the family. There's a lot of us around. Also, other things connected with veterans that most politicians don't know about. I am shocked to discover a lot of things that I go back and review, those little discs that I buy, original is 10 bucks, extra copies cost a little more, but I have almost all of them. My plans are to write a book. I got to find out to make sure it's legal and I can use them, of things that's been voted on and things that people have said right here, them little discs, don't forget. I was shocked to hear about how some property is owned, as you know, as a Realtor, Mr. Ludlow, some is sole proprietor, LCC, corporation, different ways, but I heard about Milwaukee Downtown Development Corps. I had to go down to the Secretary of State to find out who was the signer of that. Interesting. It got more interesting. That'll go in the book. And I got to be careful, out of respect, that's how us military folks are. And you don't hear about the veterans too much, except around election time, then they all want to blow their horn about what they've done for the veterans, which most of them have no idea of what veterans is all about. They've never been one. So, it's all about voting, getting votes, money, political issues, to where they can get their hands on the money grab. So, this book is going to get interesting. That's what I want to share. You, I just got to make sure it's legal. I don't do anything if it ain't honest and truthful and legal. One veteran's comments, he sang a song, this man right here, Mr. McFeeters, he said, the song, "He has loosed the faithful lightning of his terrible swift sword; his truth is marching on." That's what it's going to be. The truth will set you free. I'm a poet and don't know it. Make a rhyme every time. Having more fun. And Mr. Ludlow, you too. I'm done.
You know, Mac, anything you have on those little tiny discs, that's public information, and you can do with it as you will.
Yeah, but when you get it off of the computer, you can't record it. I buy those, they cost 10 bucks a piece, and I have enough to buy another copy.
On that disc is simply public information. I believe that that.
So, it's legal?
Mr. Matcor, it is totally legal to quote from a public document, is it not?
It is the public record, Chair. You are correct.
I say, I can't hear good, I'm sorry.
It's a public record, and I am correct that you can use anything you find on those little discs.
And even in a book, Mr. Matcor?
I, I'm sorry, I prefer not to provide legal advice to Mr. Woods at this time, but the public record is the public record. It is available for dissemination.
Now, Mac, you've engaged a lot of attorneys before, and my understanding is.
Well, I suppose one ever won a case against one.
Make a phone, make a phone call to them and say, you know, I've got these little tiny discs, and I use them any way, which way I want, and I'll bet they'll say yes.
Thank you for that comment. I've done that, and I've discovered a lot of them don't know what they don't know. That's why I won in the whole first-ever case against an attorney in Oregon, and I'm going to do it again. Ta-da, I'm done.
Thank you, Mac.
Going to get more fun. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So, we are going to call forward our County DA, John Foote, and Judge Deanne Darling. And others.
I think we just have to call first.
Support group.
Good morning. It's great to be here, Chair Ludlow, members of the Commission. With me is Mary Renfro, who's from the Oregon Coalition Against Drug Crime in Olin Park, Olin Park Coalition Against Drug Crime, I'm sorry. And we're here today to award a recognition to somebody who's long deserved it. This is, we've created a Dee Lewitz Community Commitment Award, and this is the first presentation, and we're awarding it to Dee Lewitz. And unfortunately, she, we know she's been ill, and she's not here. We regret that, but we still want to move forward with this. So, and Judge Darling, we're supposed to be here, but with judges, they never know.
She's here.
That's good.
Yeah, I called her forward.
Hey.
Hey. Good for you. Well, she is here, and we're going to start all over here in just a minute. Now, I guess Mary's getting replaced by the judge. No, Mary's coming back. Here's some musical chairs here. There's another one, Deanne.
I'll introduce the folks in the audience here to you, too. You know Judge Darling. This is Mary Renfro from the Coalition. Mark Lyons is a defense attorney who works in the community court up, that serves Olin Park. This is Sarah McClurg from the Sheriff's Office. Dave Paul, our first community prosecutor. You know Bill Stewart, who's our current community prosecutor, right here on the end. Behind is, oh, where are you, Philip? Phyllis Bergen.
Hi.
Who's one of the social work, a social worker who works out of the court. And next to her is Caroline Connor and Joyce Winkles. Winklehake? Winklehake? Yes. And they are from the Coalition. And they're all here for Dee. And there are other folks who I do not know, who came in and I did not get to know, so do you want to say who you are?
I'm Paul Wood, wife of Norma.
Oh, hi.
You might want to repeat that, John, because they, nobody can hear that.
Sure.
Tom and Norma Rankin, we're friends and family.
Tom and Norma, Frank, friends of the fam, family, excuse me.
Erica Silver, Human Services Manager.
Erica Silver, Human Services Manager, I imagine. But you work for her, yes, yes, okay. We're all here for Dee, and this is the first award we've given. We've created a plaque which reads as follows. Dee Lewitz Community Commitment Award is presented to the community member who has demonstrated outstanding and sustained commitment to making Clackamas County a stronger and safer community by improving the quality of life in our county. Now, Dee see that? And her name is bright, front and center, 2015, and then we've got an individual award for her as well. And I'd like to talk for a minute about Dee on behalf of everyone here in our office, and I think Judge Darling wants to say a few things, too. So, this is, as I said, the first award. We created this in honor of Dee. I think many of you probably are aware of Olin Park, where it is, but back in 2001, it was a community that needed help with crime and quality of life and drug houses and community cleanup, and it was largely, this unincorporated part, west of 82nd to 55th, up to Johnson Creek. I can't, forget what the southern boundary is. Do we know?
Milwaukee.
King Road. Oh, way down, okay. And we wanted to address it in a way that was beyond just traditional enforcement and prosecution, and there was a model called community prosecution, where the model is, you get a community prosecutor to get the community involved in solving these problems for themselves. And Dave Paul was our first one, and we borrowed this idea from other people who came up with it first, and it's worked in amazing ways, and it's created, we have a community court up there, we have, we have a truancy court that works out of there, that helps get kids in school, that Judge Darling was, helped. out of there that helps gets kids in school that Judge Darling was, helped us create. Bill Stewart was involved in that. So, let me just read a couple of things. Dee has been a part of Overland Park Community Prosecution Project since we started in April 2001. She's a founding member of the Overland Park Coalition Against Drug Crime, which was created in 2001. She's a part of the team of the Oregon Park Coalition, Overland Park Coalition Against Drug Crime, which does annual garage sales to fund the coalition, drug takebacks annually, neighborhood cleanups. And those used to be a huge deal. I mean, huge. Remember, Dave? How many dumpsters we got up there? And the county was a huge partner in this. The county funded the first prosecutor to do this. An annual door-to-door information drops to about 1,500 homes and cleanup of Johnson Creek every year since 2007. She's been a volunteer for the National Night Out of Celebration up at Overland Park every year since 2001 and, and has been a chair of that annual event. She's been a community representative on the task force that created the Overland Park Community Court in 2005, and she volunteers, has volunteered weekly in there. She's a community representative on the task force that created, excuse me, a community volunteer for the attendance court, also called a truancy court, which is all designed with, Judge Darling was a key part of this, designed to leverage parents whose kids weren't going to school, 'cause we have a lot of dropouts. So, we're here, here to honor Dee today. And I know there are other people may wanna say something, including Judge Darling. So, would you like to say something, Judge?
Uh, gotta come up to the microphone, yeah.
So, Dee, if there was a reason to shut the court down, it'd be you, right here today. I tried my hardest to get them all to close up business, but there's far too much crime in rack and ruin among families to do that. So, they sent me, 'cause I'm close, on behalf of the entire Circuit Court to thank you for the tireless hours you have given to this community. Many of the problem-solving courts, isn't that an odd concept, problem-solving courts? As if courts don't just solve problems every day. But we've created little unique subsets within the court system called problem-solving courts. Many of them wouldn't exist today without volunteers. Courts don't have sufficient staff to man what we need to do. And in order to reach out to families, we can't do it nine to five, Monday through Friday. We've gotta do it in the evening, when people are available to come. Without people like Dee and Mary and the others, these courts would not exist. And as a result of the tireless hours you have given, at least to my project, the attendance court, kids are back in school, crime is low, families function, and the world is getting better. And it wouldn't happen without people like Dee. Dee's health has kept her from joining me lately, and so it's been sad to have my Thursday nights, three of them a month, from five on, without you there. But I want you to know that the, the benchmark you set for volunteers continues, and families are still getting better. You've helped in community court, if I remember right, I think you've helped in mental health court. Did you, did you do some time there, too? I think so. I, I have no idea how many hours this woman has given to keeping what the court does best, solve people's problems with them, not to them, not for them, but with them. And on behalf of the bench, Dee, thank you for all of the hours and the commitment to moving our community to one which I think will function better. And you deserve this award, and your name will live forever. Congratulations.
Not only has Dee affected the courts, she's affected her community in a way that I think is quite unique. And the people that are here are people that have followed her, followed her example. And Dee, I wanna thank you personally, and on behalf of Bill and Dave in our office, for all you've done to help this particular community that needed your help. You've deserved this recognition for a long time, and it's well deserved. This plaque will go up in our office, in your name, in the lobby. Everyone will see it. And this is your individual award, which you can take home with you.
Let me see.
All right? And, and, there is one other thing. Would you like to come on? Sure, sit down here.
You have just been a blessing.
You can probably tell us who you are.
I'm sorry. I'm Phyllis Bergen, and I'm with Clackamas County Social Services. And I've been absolutely blessed and honored to work with Dee since the beginning, since our court began. And Paul, I think, is somebody who was there when I began, too. But I just can't thank you enough for the vision that not only you have given the community, but social services as a whole. Because the work I do at social services certainly reflects the vision that not only you've given to the community, but, well, to all of us. And so, I just, on, on social services behalf, on my behalf personally, I am just, I just want your vision to continue to live on and on. You've just been an inspiration to me.
She has, yes. Thank you.
We have all these things to take home. That's really the end of our presentation, unless the commissioners wanna say anything, or, Mary, do you wanna say anything?
No. Dee has been- Yes, Dee has been an inspiration to me, and I'm so glad that she was able to make it this morning. Otherwise, I'd have had to accept for you, and that wouldn't have been quite right. I think you needed to be here. So, thank you, Dee, for all your help over the years.
Commissioner Savas.
Well, I just wanna say that I met Dee and others in that Overland area about 2010, about five years ago. So, just a great example, a great study, were simply taking over the community and making it better and turning that whole community around. I've been out to many events out over there. Just a, a, amazing change that you've made. So, thanks to all of you, Dee and others, for all the work you're doing in keeping that area and changing it. The transformation's been incredible. So, thank you so much for what you've done for that community.
Commissioner Bernard.
Well, I just wanna add, I've been to a number of events over there. I was a mayor in 2001, when you guys started all this. But one of the things that I remember most is that when, Happy Valley in Milwaukee, this area is within the UGMA, and we used to battle over, "We don't want this." Happy Valley said, "We don't want this." Well, now what you have is something people want. Now, not that I'm suggesting Milwaukee or anybody else is gonna annex it. I'm just saying that it, it became a place of value that it did not have before. So, what you've done for the community has brought value and respect to an area that, at one time, nobody wanted.
Commissioner Schrader.
Have to remember to put on the microphone, because, so I'm not, as I said, infecting everybody with my cold here. I wanna thank you for all the work you've done at Overland Park. It continues to be one of my favorite places to go when you do the National Night Out. And I spent many years going to that one, usually the first and the best. And it's been quite a fun time. I wanted to mention, I was gonna mention this later, actually under Commissioner Communication as well, but when I was at the National Association of Counties Conference, we had an opportunity to get briefed through the Rural Action Caucus of the White House Domestic Policy Council, Doug O'Brien, dealing with childhood poverty. And I would very much, and one of the things that I just got an email about the other day, is they would like to know what counties across the nation are doing for poverty and to help children out of poverty. And I certainly think that this fits the, the bill, whether it be urban or rural. So, I'd like to get some more information and use this to send to the White House Policy Council as a model of one of the practices that we do here in this county. And it will get national attention. The National Association looks at best practices across the United States of America. It was a privilege to be briefed by the White House Counsel. Commissioner Smith actually was meeting with other legislators when I had the opportunity to go to the Eisenhower Executive Building and get that briefing with President Obama's groups. And this was with the President of NACO and other individuals, commissioners from across the nation. So, I don't want it to end here. I'd like to see if we can bring this model nationally and this award nationally. Thank you for all the hard work you do.
Dee, on behalf of the commission, it sounds like a great, a great, great award and very deserve it. A couple of years ago, we, CCSD-1, Clackamas County Service District Number One, brought sewer into some of those areas that desperately needed it. We recognized that there were a lot of poor people there and basically subsidized a lot of that. It's really helped the neighborhoods. There's nothing, for the, being a child of the 50s and 60s, I will tell you, when septic systems weren't working, and there were such things as cesspools and everything, there was a lot more disease back then, too. It was great to see sewer in that area. I think that's an important part of it, it's regentrification. But I really appreciate, you know, the grassroots here. Commissioner Bernard and others, who's, he's mainly in, in his volunteerism with AOC, is about public safety. And we talk about early intervention, and specifically the judges' work in getting kids back to school, and how important that is, and how it develops pride in a neighborhood, and pride in the parents, and really a feeling of, of neighborhood instead of a, a lost feeling that I think a lot of youth feel. So, again, thank you for, for your hard work, your volunteerism, and we wish you the best in the future.
Thank you very much. Could I add, just, 'cause Commissioner Savas said something that reminded me. I remember the very first National Night Out, and I think some people at Overland Park will remember this. They will remember this. All the drug offenders came, remember that? And there were more drug, they were trying to find out what this was, and there were more of them hanging out in the park than there were people from the community. And it, the last time I went, it was, they weren't around anymore, and it was the community. And the biggest thing Dee, and by her example, others, did, I think, rather than just change the community, they gave, people were angry and hopeless before. They were frustrated. People who cared, people like people in this room and many others. And this, what Dee and others did was give them hope and a way to deal with this that was reasonable and made them empowered. And I think that effect was the greatest thing, the greatest gift she's given, I think.
Commissioner Bernard.
I just wanna add, the nickname was Felony Flats, and I haven't heard anybody use that name in a long time.
All right, one last round of applause. Dee, congratulations. I think we're going to recess for a couple of minutes while people leave the room. So, we'll recess. All right, welcome back, ladies and gentlemen. A call to order again, the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners, this business meeting. We had to recess briefly, just so the huge throng that showed up for that wonderful woman could have an opportunity to leave. Mr. Krupp.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. We have another terrific presentation for this morning. This involves the Clackamas County Service District Number One, and we are going to receive an award from the Energy Trust of Oregon. I'm going to invite Greg Geist, who is our interim Director of Water Environment Services, up to the microphone to introduce the presentation.
Morning, Chair Ludlow, commissioners. It's a real pleasure to be here today. We have good news. We have a big check presentation. I'm here with Ray Hoxley from the Energy Trust of Oregon. He's our senior technical program manager for their industrial program.
Pull that a little closer to you.
Sure. Yeah, sorry, I'm pretty soft spoken. This is a project that we did at our Kellogg Wastewater Treatment Plant in Milwaukee. It was a modernization project, and ultimately is gonna save us about $19,000 a year in energy costs, as well as hopefully finding some improvements in our odor situation there at Kellogg as well. So, I'm here with Michael Trent and Doug Rumpel and Randy Rosain from West. And I also wanted to acknowledge Dwayne Cleaver, who was the project manager for this and did really all the work. So, with that, I'll hand it off to Ray.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you this morning. My name is Ray Hoxley, as Greg said, and I am the Senior Technical Manager with Energy Trust of Oregon. I am joined today by our Renewables Energy Project Manager, Dave Maldal, and our Community Relations Manager, Jay Ward. I would like to start today by thanking you and your staff for investing in energy efficiency, not just at the Kellogg Creek facility, but also for your previous investments in efficient operations, as evidenced in this building, with HVAC and lighting upgrades. It's a very beautiful building, and it's nice to see our work in progress here. As you may know, Energy Trust of Oregon is an independent nonprofit organization, serving the customers of PGE, Pacific Power, Northwest Natural, and Cascade Natural Gas. We help homeowners, businesses, and specific to this occasion, governments, use less energy and generate renewable power. We do this because saving energy costs just a fraction of what it costs utilities to generate and deliver the same amount of energy. Energy Trust has helped customers save enough energy to power all the homes in Clackamas and Marion Counties for almost a year and a half, and that results in a power plant not having to be built.
Wow.
Substantial. Our work helps keep costs lower for all customers and sustains a strong local economy. Participating, participating customers have already saved 1.7 billion, with a B, on energy bills with our help, savings that will continue on year after year. In addition, Energy Trust investments have stimulated $3 billion in economic activity in our local economy, including over $930 million in wages, $180 million in small business income, and some 2,500 jobs lasting a decade. These savings and economic benefits are realized because of projects like this one that was completed at Kellogg Creek, where you are now getting more from your energy. Today, we are presenting this $127,752 big check to celebrate Clackamas County's second phase of energy-saving investment at the Kellogg Creek Water Pollution Control Plant. As a result of this upgrade, facility managers have been able to completely turn off one large blower during the wet weather, and also turn down other blowers that are operating, while still achieving the same high-quality results. And the savings aren't stopping there. The team at Kellogg Creek is conscientious about monitoring the control system and keeping an eye out for opportunities to save and generate even more energy. So, this project frees up more than $19,000 per year, as Greg mentioned, that Clackamas County can use to maintain and strengthen your operations. And I, I do personally want to acknowledge the great work by, by Dwayne Cleaver, the project manager, Randy Rosain, the civil engineering supervisor, and thank Maureen Kenny for putting on today's event. Thank you very much. Without their initial vision and ongoing commitment, projects like this one would never be possible. I'd also like to acknowledge our utility partner, Alan Warman of PGE. Without partners like PGE and Clackamas County, our work to help your citizens save energy and money would not be possible. Thank you again for your vision and investment in county infrastructure. It is my hope that we can make a habit out of handing out these well-earned incentive checks here in Clackamas County. We'd be happy to do more. Before we make the presentation, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about this project or Energy Trust of Oregon.
Commissioners, what would you probably go on with the presentation?
Excellent. Excellent.
Well, we've got to have, you should talk on the microphone, because what you said was probably important. Right up the microphone.
We're going to call Wes folks up.
Oh, is that what she said? I couldn't, we couldn't hear. Okay?
I hope we get a big wallet with that.
You know, if you would like, you can make the presentation with the commissioners in front, if they would like it that way. Is that the way you want it? All right. Now, you got, some of us have unusual names to spell. You got all of our names correct on that check, right?
Absolutely.
Why don't you, why don't you all come back here instead? So, the commissioners in the back, and you guys in the front, because it's better for the photo op. So, come right in front of us here and make your presentation. Line up so we can, if you can't see the camera, it can't see you. Well, that's a poor shot. All right. Well, congratulations. We always like checks here at Clackamas County, and as, as you said, money that is saved in this way can be better utilized and utilized for other things in our county. So, congratulations, or thank you, I should say, and congratulations to us for receiving it. All right, I won't take a recess. I'll just thank everybody for coming. We can go on with business. And now, it is time for the consent agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda. Under Health, Housing, and Human Services' approval of a revenue memorandum of agreement with Care Oregon, Inc., to develop improved engagement and access to new members and develop clinical care teams at the Clackamas County Health Centers. Approval of an intergovernmental program performance agreement with Clackamas Education Service District. Approval to apply to Oregon Department of Education, Oregon Youth Development Division Youth and Community Grant to improve education and workforce successes for, ooh, I missed something there. For youth. I missed the word youth on the slide.
We're very forgiving.
Okay, thank you. Approval of a grant award agreement with Oregon Department of Education Early Learning Division to develop focused childcare networks. Under our Finance Department, approval of a contract with Hydro Temp Mechanical, Inc., for the new membrane roofing system and HVAC replacement at the Clackamas County Jail facility. A resolution acknowledging expenditures in excess of appropriations for fiscal year 2014 and describing corrective action in accordance with ORS 297466. Under the elected officials' approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under Business and Community Services' approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Oregon City and Clackamas County for Oregon City Enterprise Zone Program Management. And underwater environment services and Tri-City Service District, we have authorization for county council to initiate litigation against the City of Oregon City on behalf of Clackamas County Tri-City Service District. And that concludes our consent agenda.
All right. Do commissioners want to pull any of the items from the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Motion made by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Bernard. Further discussion? Commissioner Bernard?
I just want to say it's great that we're finally going to get that roof fixed on the jail. We spent a lot of money on that jail. The nice thing is, is that technology has greatly improved owning a flat-roofed building. I often wonder who thought of doing that in Oregon, but I have one building in Milwaukee that I put a membrane on, and I have not had trouble when I fought that thing, my, our whole life, we fought that thing. So, I'm glad they're using new technology.
That's for sure. And I want to add that part of this is new HVAC units, too. So, you know, it's one thing to be incarcerated or have to be in, feeling like you're incarcerated as an employee. It's another thing for temperature control, which is very important, because that place tends to get hot, in my opinion. So, I think we're ready for the poll.
Okay. Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
And Chair Ludlow?
Aye. Passes five zero. And I know, here's the time when everybody waits on bated breath for this delivery of county administrator update.
So, we need the musical floor?
Yeah, a little bit. Get your guitar out, too, buddy. I know you'll play it.
All right. So, I've got a couple of good things to share with you.
Microphone a little closer to yourself.
Ah, yes. So, this last weekend, I'm happy to say, we had nearly 400 people volunteer to help out with the watershed-wide event at Johnson Creek. It's an initiative that's cosponsored by our Water Environment Services Department, the same department that just received $175,000 check. I was thinking about changing my name to Water Environment Services. But the volunteers had turned out to help improve water quality and wildlife habitat by removing trash, pulling invasive vegetation, and planting native plant life along the water. And it looks like we've got a similar event coming this Saturday out at Rock Creek that we're also expecting another large turnout. I just want to take a moment to thank the volunteers and also our staff with Water Environment Services for the good work they do there. I was going to also let you know that yesterday evening, I attended the graduation ceremony for the Women's Corrections Substance Abuse Program that's held at the Gladstone Church of the Nazarene on Jennings Avenue. Seven women graduated from this highly-regarded drug and alcohol treatment program, and this program is proven to be able to change lives by motivating the program participants to be able to make better choices for themselves, and with their families, and with the community. The program requires a minimum of six months of residential treatment and an additional six months of transitional programming. These graduations are among the best things that we do as a county, I think. And they give an opportunity, really, to celebrate the success and hard work of these individuals to show that change is really, really possible. And so, while we're on the subject of successes with our law and justice system, I just wanted to also share, because I was given this chart just this morning, and I know this is a repeat, because I think Chair Ludlow mentioned this at the State of the County, but it bears repeating, and that is the success of our juvenile program, which works with juvenile offenders. And I'm happy to say that our 2014 recidivism rate is really among the lowest in the entire state, at 17.4 percent. Just a terrific job. Our staff over there really work very, very hard at what they do. I'm very proud of our director, Ellen Crawford, for the work she does, and it really is worth sharing and repeating over and over again. We do great work there. And then, finally, I wanted to let you know that next week, I will be sitting down with the Business and Community Services Department, the Finance Department, and the Transportation and Development Department to hear their presentations for their respective corporate reviews for how they intend to carry out your goals in implementing Performance Clackamas. And so, I'm very much looking forward to those presentations next week. I'll probably have plenty of questions for each of the departments. And then, at the appropriate opportunity, I will share with you the work product that we have. So, that's my report for this morning.
Thank you. I might note, you know, I work with the Department of Corrections and Volunteer, and Oregon has one of the lowest, and I think I mentioned this, recidivism rates in the nation. Right, hanging around 30 percent. Women are a little lower than men. But if you really look at the 17 percent of our juveniles, that's extremely low, and I'm numbered to be proud of. So, yes, I agree with that. And now, it's time for another exciting portion, and that would be the commissioner's communication, and we'll start with her ladyship, Martha Schrader.
Well, I think I've called her ladyship because I spend time in England, and I'm glad to be back, although I brought back a cold with me from Great Britain. I'm happy to say that my second grandchild is doing just fine. Her name is Harper Faydak, so I have nicknamed her Scout. And many of you that know the book To Kill a Mockingbird will know that's how she got her nickname, and she's doing well. I just talked to my daughter this morning at about 7:00 a.m., and she was a little tiny thing at six pounds, 11 ounces, and she's now up to seven and a half pounds. So, she's doing well, and it was wonderful to be there and to see Harper and her big brother Jasper, who is becoming quite the toddler, as Chair Ludlow will tell you. I actually attempted to attend a meeting by phone, and little Jasper proceeded to fall down the stairwell and bump his head on the landing, which is why they call them landings, and I had to get off right away, and he is fine, but he did have a big lump on the back of his head. So, thank you for being patient with baby and toddler chaos for Commissioner Schrader. The other thing I wanted to let folks know, that prior to going to the birth of my new grandchild, I had an opportunity to travel to Washington, D.C. with Commissioner Smith, where we attended the National Association of Counties Conference. I already mentioned that I had an opportunity, as a member of the Rural Action Caucus, to be briefed by the White House Domestic Policy Counsel, Doug O'Brien, about rural economic development issues in the executive building of the Eisenhower Building down in Washington, D.C. We also had a roundtable that morning with Congressional Rural Caucus members, who are other Congress folks who also have their own rural caucus. It was a very successful trip, and as I said, I'm interested in looking into rural childhood poverty and working with the Rural Action Caucus and the White House Counsel on what are those best practices for children in our rural communities. I served on the Community and Economic Workforce Development Steering Committee, where basically we passed resolutions supporting funding for the Department of Commerce, National Housing Trust Fund, as well as HUD and Community Development Block Grants. We were given a U.S. Census Bureau update, and we actually had a U.S. Trade Representative talk to us about updates on the workforce, New Workforce Investment Act. I serve on the Economic Development and International Economic Development Task Force Joint Subcommittee. I'm a vice chair of that committee, and that was a very interesting conversation, dealing with the reauthorization of the dollars for the Export-Import Bank. The reason that is so important, it allows smaller and medium-sized businesses access to resources so they can move their goods and services to an international and global market. So, it was a pretty, pretty successful conference in my mind, and I hope next week, when I dig all my paperwork out, I'll have specific handouts to give my colleagues. The other thing is that there is a new economic development tracker that the National Association has pulled together, where we can look it up on our website, and we can actually track economic development indicators and trends for every county in this country. I believe Commissioner Smith, I think at one point, also mentioned the economic tracker as a new tool.
But it's a good reminder.
Yeah, it is. It's a good tool, and I'm glad that, glad that you mentioned that. We did have an opportunity to visit with our delegation, basically Senator Wyden. We visited with staff from the National Trust for Historic Preservation, had a conversation with Representative Blumenauer and Senator Merkley, where Commissioner Smith stressed the locks, Willamette Locks reopening, and we also talked about the opportunity for development of the Blue Heron site here in Oregon City. So, Commissioner, I think it was a really successful trip. We tag teamed really well. You went off to one meeting, while I went off to another, and I think we worked hard on behalf of the county. So, with that, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Savis?
After a couple, three hard weeks of working with some of our cities in regard to some of the services we provide, sewer in particular, I can't help but reckon back to what got me involved in public service back about 18 years ago. So, in short, I really want to say that as a small business owner, as a family person, as a citizen of Clackamas County, I was kind of taken aback, especially in the year 2000, 2001, when I discovered how often jurisdictions fight amongst one another, how many disputes happen. And being actively involved with the Clackamas County Corning Committee, which is really about collaboration, it's about working cooperatively, that, we need more of that all the time. And I guess it's not uncommon for jurisdictions to have disputes, and whether they take place at the staff-to-staff level, or whether they take place at the elected level is somewhat irrelevant, but when they boil down, or they cost people money, or they cost taxpayers money, it doesn't, it doesn't really bode very well. So, my message to fellow electeds and the citizens and staff out there is, you know, I found that we can always solve disputes, and we work in good faith. Those are some key words, good faith. Whenever, whenever two parties have a dispute, and they truly want to solve it, and they work in good faith, we can solve a lot of problems. And I hope that we can do more of that in the future, because at the end of the day, it's our, it's our citizens who pay. And getting into litigation or those kinds of things, not only destroy or cost money, but they destroy the faith in elected officials or government that we really need to restore. So, we need to, in a period of time where we need to restore trust, it's really important that all of us work, again, in good faith to solve problems. So, I will continue to take that approach, continue to solve problems, which is what I love to do. That's all I have for today.
All right. And next, we have, I've got to get my notes here. I'm trying to keep track of this. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank Commissioner Schrader for mentioning all those activities. You know, when this board travels, like, to attend a national conference and, and visit and try to lobby our national delegation in Washington, it's actually more work there than it is here. So, from the minute you arrive, you're shot out of a cannon, and you're hitting the streets and the ivory towers, if you want to call them that, and it's quite time-consuming. But next week, I hope to have a very surprising announcement about something I learned at the conference that will affect all of our citizens. This week, we had our State of the County address. It was filmed live, and questions came in live. And so, just so you know, the questions we received, we do not know the content of the questions. And so, it's kind of, you're kind of on the hot seat. You don't know what the constituents are going to ask. So, if some of the answers weren't as well-prepared as the questionnaire would like, I would encourage them to follow up and send us an email, and maybe we can get you a very good answer. Although, I think it went well. Most of the questions were in general. We did get a few specific questions, but it went very well with those in attendance. And those things always just make me really nervous. So, that was that. I've been working and meeting with constituents in the area, with electeds in our cities, our city councils, and constituents listening to their concerns. Right now, a lot of our attention is being diverted to the legislative session. Sometimes we live and breathe by what happens in Salem as far as the bills are passed. So, we're all very active in either visiting our legislators, lobbying them, writing letters, influence them in any way we can, and all of our stakeholders, to get good, positive results for Clackamas County. So, just keep that in mind. We're very busy with our once-every-two-year session to try to get some good policy initiatives and funding as well for our many programs. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Bernard?
I noticed you had to look up Commissioner Smith's name, so you...
Oh, quit it.
It's a hard one.
Trying to get the order of things.
You know, one thing I think Paul mentioned, that we do always make an effort to try to resolve our issues before we end up in court, or whatever, and we... And we do, I think we generally do a great job, but sometimes, you're not successful. I think that our discussions with Oregon City created a bill, HB 2800, which has now been polled. I think we could have, I think we did a good job of outreach, trying to resolve this problem. But if that doesn't work, go to the legislature. Not that that's a good idea. And as you can see, if you looked at all the bills, for example, Damascus, there are three or four bills on Damascus last night. Yesterday, they voted down their plan again. So, it's, I don't know when they're going to get there. There are some bills in Salem that I would have, you know, I think we need to reach out to those sponsors. One is if Damascus dissolves, there's about $5 million in the pot. If Damascus dissolves, there's no more city anymore, the law enforcement's going to be decreased. There's an opportunity to perhaps use that $5 million to keep that enhanced law enforcement or that law enforcement service. Why, it would be enhanced, because it's a city, as cities usually have enhanced law enforcement. Not that it's always better, but it's enhanced. I want to thank the Administrator, Dawn, for going to CSAP about 7:00. I'm asked, "Weren't you supposed to go to CSAP?" And I said, "It's 7:00"? Well, I was out actually burning, since I'm a rancher now, I can burn in my pasture. I was burning blackberries. So, I'm sorry I missed that, but I think all of you should go sometime, because, I'll tell you, I had tears in my eye. It's not just about the person recovering, it's often about the family. It's usually the family, not only that was being destroyed by this individual, but has rebuilt that relationship, because when you're an addict, it is not easy. You know, one thing I always thought about when I went to the juvenile courts is, boy, it'd be sure a lot easier to just stay out of trouble and stay away from drugs, because it's a lot harder to get away from them.
It is.
AOC Public Safety Committee, we have some domestic violence bills that are being considered. Also, Clackamas County and many counties have worked very hard to reduce the number of people we send to prison, because we can invest other ways to not only prevent, I think our juvenile programs demonstrate that, prevent people from being in that position of going to prison. Also, in our youth programs, to help turn those kids around and those families around. But that $58.5 million that was saved, so we wouldn't have to build a prison, actually has been swept by the legislature, except for some figures, they're considering 20 to 25 million, which was promised to us for law enforcement. I hope we'll, I hope the legislators are listening, and we need all the help we can to continue the great service we provide. I'm going to mention, I promised this the last time, I stopped the dog barking. I'm going to try to stop the Australia-New Zealand thing, but I got to tell you something, I was embarrassed when I drove through Australia and New Zealand to see this investment in infrastructure. It's amazing, the investment in infrastructure. Part of that's because we're not willing to pay tolls. We drove on many roads that you pay tolls for, and you could choose that road or another half-hour drive or an hour drive and avoid the toll of $2.50. But those toll roads are magnificent. There is a tunnel that, that must be four miles long, that you pay a toll to go through, or you can go through the city. And obviously, people do choose to do that. This country has failed to invest in our infrastructure, and not only is it our problem today, it's our children's problem in the future. So, I hope that we start looking that way. And just finally, this weekend, on March 14th, is the crowning of the Fair, or the Clackamas County Fair and Rodeo Court. It's at the Cambie, or Clackamas County Event Center, at 694 Northeast Fourth Avenue in Cambie. And it'd be great if folks could come. It's $20 to get into the event, and I hope as many people as possible will try to attend. That's the crowning of the Clackamas County Fair and Rodeo Court. And you can also go on the web at www.clackamasscountyeventcenter.com, and probably buy tickets, but you could certainly find out more about the event. Hope to see some of the commissioners there. I'm looking forward to it. I've been to a number of them. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Jim. Yes, we, most of us spent Monday at the Association of Oregon Counties, where we weighed in on a great deal of bills that were mentioned here. We had the State of County event, and only three commissioners were there, but there was a reason for that. Commissioner Schrader had flown in that day with a cold. She's very flown with a cold. You know what's in store for her, so she wasn't able to make it. And Commissioner Savis was excused. We asked him to be at the Gladstone City Council meeting to talk to them as necessary when they came to a decision on their support or lack of support for HB 2800, which has now been tabled. Yesterday, we interviewed the three candidates for the Director of WES, and so, we have three outstanding candidates. LCDC remand will be out today. Now, we had one recently, and then it was polled, and now it will come out, and it will affect the future of Clackamas County to some degree. But as was said a little earlier, unfortunately, or fortunately, the legislature may have to address some things to get Clackamas County out of appellate purgatory. You know, because we don't have any rural or urban designated lands, we're stuck. Growth cannot occur of any kind, especially into the lands that will be even urban reserved. There's a summit tonight between, with the cities and the county, and I think it'll be very interesting. We are not really participating. We are gathering information, which I think is very important. Just to recap some of the actions we took this week. In our policy sessions, we got an update on the road ahead. It is, it is my wish that we put something on the ballot this calendar year and ask. Regardless of what Portland intends to do, they're a separate entity. We've got to take care of our roads, and we have not been. So, the policy sessions will be scheduled March 21st and April 21st to get additional information regarding different options in the way of how we collect money to pay for the roads. We also went through planning alternatives for low-density residential in the Jennings Lodge, Oak Grove, and CPO boundaries. There's great sensitivity down there, but what I think people must notice, note that only eight applications to our planning manager's recollection have been done in that entire area, and amounts to a very small amount of property. But those people are rightfully concerned about the change of character in their area, and so, we will be scheduling that for a later policy session. We voted four to zero to adopt, it's not the actual ordinance yet, it's coming forward, on time, place, and manner in regards to the operation of medical marijuana. Now, the other night, at the town hall, we got several questions about marijuana, but it was, it was a lot about recreational marijuana, and people should recognize the difference between the two. Recreational marijuana will be administered by the OLCC. They have not come up with their rules. They've been traveling the state, talking to people, taking an input, and to find out what their final rules will be. After they make their rules, we will probably be able to make some rules in regards to distribution, the growing, the retailing of recreational, I call it optional, marijuana. Just real quickly, I think you should know some of the bills that we took a stand on, and Commissioner Bernard had mentioned Damascus. The Damascus de-annexation, we voted to support that. We took a neutral stand on the Damascus dis-incorporation, and we have voted to support SB 716, which would give us, and three counties in the Port Metropolitan Area, up to 500 acres of additional industrial properties. We voted to support the natural gas line to Estacada, the creation of a work group to support that. Estacada, they have great industrial lands, but without natural gas, it does hurt their marketing, for sure. We voted to, on SB 3215, we voted to remain neutral, and that has to do with taking exception to statewide land use goals. So, that's kind of a synopsis of that. And lastly, we have, for the good of the order, several things to tell you, including that the Cultural Tourism Summit, Mary's going to put up a slide, is going to occur on, no, you don't have a slide. I'm going by my script here. No slide. So, that will be Monday, the 16th, the Cultural Tourism Summit. I'm pretty sure you can find the information for that on our website. The North Clackamas Chamber Public Safety Forum is Thursday, the 19th, as well as the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office Awards Ceremony on Thursday, the 19th. Now, I bet you have one for this, Mary. A reminder, the county is organizing its first-ever Citizen Academy. We do have that one? No, yes?
Yes.
Okay. The first-ever Citizen Academy. The Citizen Academy is a chance for 20 members of the public to attend six monthly workshops that will focus on county government and how departments work and provide services to the community. Sessions will feature interactive discussions, presentations, and tours of county facilities. There is a link to the online application on the county webpage, clackamas.us. The application deadline, emphasis, is March 23rd. And lastly, I want to mention that there is, we have scheduled and agreed upon four town halls this year. What's interesting about these, and I'll announce them, but what's interesting about these is, they will be topic-oriented. So, as you can see on the screen, the topic of Grow a Vibrant Economy, that will be held in the Stafford area, probably Stafford Primary School on Tuesday, April 21st, then Build a Strong Infrastructure at Milwaukee High School on June 17th, Ensure Safe and Healthy Communities, that will be in Cambie in August. There's no specific date as of yet. And the topic Honor, Utilize, Promote, and Invest Our Natural Resources, and the location will be Welch's. Now, I might note that these tie in directly with, of course, some of the charges we gave, Performance Clackamas, our strategic plan to achieve, and that was by unanimous vote of this commission. So, I just want to mention one last thing about what Commissioner Bernard was talking about, how families change people. You know, one of the, one of the basic precepts of Through a Child's Eyes, which I created at Coffee Creek Correctional Facility 13 years ago and still survives, is that you've got to bring family members, and this specifically, our work is with mothers and their children. But Taste Like Events have been created throughout the state, and the key to it is, is bringing the families in to give that inmate one more chance. With sideboards, with rules, with agreements, that they seem to be the only ones that can make these people, including gangbangers out there, own up to their responsibility to their family, and it has turned lives around. So, I agree with you on that. There being no further business before the commission this day, ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.